Good evening. At this time, I will call into open session the meeting of the Arlington Independent School Board of Trustees for May 4th, 2023, beginning at 6:41. Members of the public may access the meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in the meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the board trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts a meeting or speaks while others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Mays in leading us in the pledges.
... pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a special presentation. Ms. Foster?
President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, everyone here, a packed house tonight, and everyone watching online, several hundred people. It's like there's an announcement or something tonight. But before we get to that, we have a wonderful presentation. If y'all didn't know, we are celebrating in the Arlington ISD our 50th anniversary of our strings program. So all year long, we've been bringing representation of that program. Yes, y'all can clap for that. That's great. We have been bringing representation from all across the district. Tonight, you are going to be blown away. These groups of students that you're going to hear play tonight sound like they're in high school orchest-- they're junior high school. This is junior high that you're going to hear tonight. Let me tell you about them. So we have the Texas Music Educators Association that we work with, and every year, they host regional competitions around the state for band, choir, and orchestra. The North Texas Area Region 5 competition is open to students in Arlington, Grand Prairie, Mansfield, Cedar Hill, and Fort Worth, and over 400 students participate. They audition to be in this orchestra. They took 224, and 123 of them are from the Arlington ISD. So these students that are here in front of you tonight that are going to play represent a large portion of the Region 5 Symphonic Orchestra that is the top ensemble in our region. The students are among the elite junior high musicians around our area, and they are known not only in Arlington, but across the state as well. They recently participated in the All-Region Clinic and Concert where they joined together to prepare a full concert program under the direction of Mary Havenstrite, who was a winner of the Texas State Honor Orchestra multiple times. The concert was really great, and tonight, they're going to play you something from that concert that was performed by Jeremy Wollston-Holme. They're going to be conducted by our Region 5 Middle School Orchestra Division Coordinator and Head Director of Orchestras at Gunn Junior High and Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. It's a mouthful, but it's Mr. Don Sibley. So I'm going to ask you guys to just sit back and be amazed at our orchestra tonight. Take it away.
Thank you.
Can't you play one more?[475.33][475.33](Laughter) That was the best of the best right here in Arlington, Texas. Isn't that amazing? They're in junior high. Oh my gosh.[502.33][502.33](Applause) So impressed. Thank you, sir. All right. We are ready for our May 2023 Student of the Month, and we are honored to have Greg Meeks here from Venture High School to present our Student of the Month. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, some members of the board. It's been a while since we've been here, and many of you know this is one of our most favorite nights of the year. One, we get to showcase our students and share with them what we do. At Venture, you know, we offer an alternative style of learning with blended, and Jeffrey is a perfect example of how we've been able to support students. I won't steal his thunder, but I'll tell you, last May, Jeffrey would not have even been considered to be up here. He had many struggles, but I can tell you now, Jeffrey has earned that distinguished honor this evening. You know, at Venture, we don't give credits out like Oprah. You get a credit. You get a credit. But what we do is we offer the pathway. I say that, but you know, we offer the pathway for students to be able to work very hard and diligent and to earn those credits at their own pace, even a faster pace, and Jeffrey has done that. So for the board, I would like to present Jeffrey Barrett as Venture Student of the Month, so.[585.32][585.32](Applause)
Thank you, President Fowler, Superintendent Cavassos, and the AISD board members for giving me the opportunity to talk to you. There's been a lot of challenges in my high school career. At my home campus, I struggled with anxiety, depression, as well as being bullied both physically and emotionally. Over time, I got overwhelmed and worn out, so I decided to try homeschooling, but that didn't work out very well. The homeschool program I was enrolled in was self-paced with little guidance, and I had a hard time finding motivation and started looking for an alternative. I learned about Venture through a retired teacher and gave it a try. I started in August of 2021 and tried to make it work, but my mental health wasn't where I needed to be to be productive. I struggled to even get in the building. I could park outside, but even the thought of being around that many people was overwhelming. After it didn't work out in 2021, I spent a lot of time working on myself and going through different programs and working on mental health. I was given the opportunity in the fall of 2022 to come back to Venture and start fresh. I'm not sure where I'd be in life if I wasn't given a second chance. I tried to take full advantage of this accomplishment, spent a lot of time working on school and achieving my goals. When I started, I was two years behind, and I'm now on track to graduate this summer only one month late. The self-paced program has been amazing for my progress and helped me grow academic confidence as well as prepare me for higher education. The assistance of the social workers and the very kind, understanding teachers are a huge part of my success. I've been lucky enough to be invited to talk to the orientation for new intake students every six weeks. I'm very grateful to be allowed to talk and meet all the new people coming into the program and hear their story. After I graduate in the summer, I plan on going to TCC for a few years before moving and seeing what the world has to offer. I'd like to thank Ms. Parsons, Ms. Hanks, and Mr. Meeks for being the most welcoming, understanding, and loving school administrators I've met in my life. I'd like to thank Natalie Dees for telling me about this life-changing program. I feel so many people could benefit from it. And I'd like to thank Ms. Stevenson for being my school mom, helping me learn and stay motivated, and my mom for keeping me going and believing in me. Without all these amazing people, I don't think I would be able to reach my goal of 17 credits, credits in one calendar year. I'm grateful to be acknowledged as Student of the Month and hope I can live up to the expectations others have and the potentials others see in me.[725.19][725.19](Applause)
Jeffrey, you are an amazing kid. You know that? You were so brave and so open, telling us about your troubles and how you've gotten through them, and I know that you are an inspiration to other students. Thank you. And I have to tell you, while you were talking and I looked over at your parents, they are so proud of you. They were just beaming listening to your words. We're very proud of you. Thank you for sharing your story with us, and we know that you're going to have a very happy and successful future. May Dr. Cavassos and I come down and give you a gift?
Of course.
Thank you.[782.43][782.43](Applause) Jeffrey, if you'll notice that I'm wearing a pin, and everyone up here is wearing a special AISD pin, we feel like you are special enough that we would like you to have a pin as well. May I present this to you?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, congratulations. You are a demonstration of love, and you represent Arlington ISD and Venture in particular exceptionally well. We're very proud of you. Wish you the very best. I know you'll have success. This is also for you, and congratulations.[831.12][831.12](Applause)
And now? And your mom there?[834.12][834.12](Laughter) The school mom! But I'll take the title. You'll take the title.[838.12][838.12](Applause) Take your time, Mr. Will Banks. We'll wait on you. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item in this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeaker request no later than 3:00 p.m. the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am. We don't have any for agenda items. We have two for later in the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to recommend the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for principal of Williams Elementary.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratification as we discussed in executive session?
President Fowler, I ask the board to move to accept the administrative appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second from Dr. Raj. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to introduce the principal for Williams Elementary, Chandler Garcia.[986.00][986.00](Applause) As you'll see in the bio, Chandler attended Texas Women's University for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently was a principal in Ferris ISD, but has been an assistant principal in Arlington ISD at Sheridan Elementary in the past, has been an instructional coach, instructional specialist, a third-grade teacher, and a fourth-grade teacher in different districts. Chandler, congratulations, and welcome.[1022.38][1022.38](Applause)
Next on our agenda are the action items, and we have eight action items this evening. Dr. Cavassos?
I think the board president will want to move one of the action items first, and that's action item G.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to move action item G to now become action item A. Do I have a trustee ready to give a motion?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Raj, were you trying to buzz in before me? Okay. Thank you, President Fowler. President Fowler, I move to approve the lone finalist for the superintendent position of Arlington Independent School District as discussed in closed session.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Are we ready for this? Before I reveal the name, I want to share with you how the Board of Trustees reached our decision, and that started with our staff and community. Through TASB, our superintendent search partner, you either attended a focus group meeting or took a survey to share the most important attributes that you wanted to see in a new leader. We took your feedback seriously because we understand that hiring a new superintendent is one of our most important duties. So thank you to everyone who shared feedback and to my fellow board members for their commitment to the process. I'd also like to thank every candidate who considered leading the Arlington AISD. We are so grateful and so honored that you considered us. Now, before I reveal the name of our lone finalist for superintendent and tell you more about them, I want you to know that this person is not related to anyone in our district, past or present. No relation. The name of the person that we are announcing to follow, Dr. Marcelo Cavassos, as our next superintendent of Arlington ISD, is Dr. Michelle Cavassos, current superintendent with the Gregory Portland ISD. Yes, we see it too, but in the good news, you don't have to learn to pronounce a new name, and you don't have to learn to spell a new name. Dr. Michelle Cavassos stood out during the interview process because of her outstanding leadership skills. She is a proven champion for culture and climate and a reflective, innovative leader. Since July of 2020, she has served as a superintendent of Gregory Portland ISD near Corpus Christi. Before that, she was the chief officer of school leadership and academics in the Austin ISD, director of secondary education in Short Cibola Universal City ISD, and has led schools as a principal at elementary, junior high, and high school levels. She even got her start in education as a bilingual elementary teacher in the Houston area where she helped lead the implementation of a dual-language program and worked to open both elementary and middle school campuses. She attended the University of Northern Iowa and received a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and another in Spanish teaching. She earned her master's degree from the University of Houston in Administration and Supervision and her doctoral degree from Texas State University in School Improvement. Through her various roles as an educational leader, Dr. Michelle Cavassos has shown herself to be a leader who embraces a commitment to educational opportunities for all students. And we believe that she will bring that leadership to the Arlington AISD and engaging consensus building with wisdom, passion, energy, and a true heart for children. Now, are we ready to vote? We all vote in the affirmative. The motion passes. You all are going to love her. She is passionate, she is smart, and she has a personality like you wouldn't believe. She is going to work very well, not only with all of our teachers and our administrators, but with the students, and she's going to work well with the community. She's very involved in her current community, and her references had nothing but positive, wonderful things to say about her. So I am so encouraged, and not that we want you to go, Dr. Cavassos--
This is an important--
But this is an important moment, and I think you all are just going to be thrilled when you have an opportunity to meet her and visit with her. So thank you, board members. I know it took many, many hours and a lot of our time and thought and deliberation, but I feel like we came to the right decision, and I appreciate each and every one of you for your commitment to seeing this through. Thank you.[1399.21][1399.21](Applause) Next on the agenda, consider approval of teacher probationary and term contracts. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening, we bring for your consideration our probationary and term contracts of staff.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Choppa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the teacher probationary and term contracts, and I'd also like to note that my vote with relation to this motion is an abstention as to Sarah Holder, who is a teacher and coach at Bowie High School.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and item C, we bring for your consideration the proposed termination of the probationary contracts for Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees terminate the employment of Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith at the end of the contract term based on the Board of Trustees' judgment that the best interests of the district will be served by this action, and that the superintendent provide written notice of this action to each employee at least 10 days before the last day of instruction for the current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second by Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and item C, we bring for your consideration the proposed termination of the probationary contracts for Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees terminate the employment of Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith at the end of the contract term based on the Board of Trustees' judgment that the best interests of the district will be served by this action, and that the superintendent provide written notice of this action to each employee at least 10 days before the last day of instruction for the current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second by Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and item C, we bring for your consideration the proposed termination of the probationary contracts for Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees terminate the employment of Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith at the end of the contract term based on the Board of Trustees' judgment that the best interests of the district will be served by this action, and that the superintendent provide written notice of this action to each employee at least 10 days before the last day of instruction for the current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second by Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees terminate the employment of Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith at the end of the contract term based on the Board of Trustees' judgment that the best interests of the district will be served by this action, and that the superintendent provide written notice of this action to each employee at least 10 days before the last day of instruction for the current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second by Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. I move to approve the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and next item, we bring for your consideration the probationary and term contracts for administrative and professional staff.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and item C, we bring for your consideration the proposed termination of the probationary contracts for Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees terminate the employment of Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith at the end of the contract term based on the Board of Trustees' judgment that the best interests of the district will be served by this action, and that the superintendent provide written notice of this action to each employee at least 10 days before the last day of instruction for the current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second by Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and item C, we bring for your consideration the proposed termination of the probationary contracts for Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Mr. Hibbs?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees terminate the employment of Kelsey Groves and Rhonda Smith at the end of the contract term based on the Board of Trustees' judgment that the best interests of the district will be served by this action, and that the superintendent provide written notice of this action to each employee at least 10 days before the last day of instruction for the current school year.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. I have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Choppa. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative, thank you.
Next item, President Fowler, is for consideration of superintendent retirement agreement.
Oh, you have it. Okay, that's a little awkward. Thank you, Mr. Will Banks.
I move to approve the superintendent retirement agreement as presented in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, it was a tie. I'll go with Ms. McMorrow. Please vote. Did you put no? I didn't know that was an option. Can we do it over? Do over. All vote in the affirmative. All right. So many. All right, we move on to action item F. Where am I? Oh, hang on. No.
Sorry.
Yeah. That's all right. Mr. Chapa, is it you?
I don't have it, but I can do it.
It's there, there it is. Dr. Raich.
Thank you, President Fowler. This is under naming of facilities, and for those that are not aware, Dr. Marcelo Cavassos had a retirement reception Tuesday evening, and as the board had already taken previous action, this is a ratification of the naming of a facility. So, I hereby move to ratify the name of the facility currently known as the Arlington I S D Center for Visual and Performing Arts to the Dr. Marcelo Cavassos Center for Visual and Performing Arts.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, I have a motion from Dr. Raich and a second from Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. And if you weren't there Tuesday evening at the celebration, you missed a party. It was incredible, and I want to do a special thank you to Ms. Anita and all of her team for pulling everything together. Ms. Foster, stand up. She and her team did an absolutely amazing job of planning everything, and I think the hardest part was keeping everything a secret. Dr. Cavassos cornered so many people in the last couple of weeks wanting to get information, and everyone was good and did not tell him anything, even though he tried. So, it was a fantastic event, and I think all of us were honored to be there, and we were honored to rename, rename the facility in his honor. So, it was a wonderful evening. All right, we've already moved that one up. Dr. Cavassos.
Next item is item H. Consider nomination of an Arlington I S D trustee for the Region 11, position C seat on the Texas Association of School Boards of Directors.
Mr. Will Banks.
I move, I move to nominate Justin Chapa for the Region 11, position C seat on the Texas Association of School Boards Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. We have a motion from Mr. Will Banks and a second from Ms. Mays. Please vote. You could even vote for yourself, come on. Motion passes, thank you.
I wasn't about to push that dude, he was a little trick.
You gotta be quick.
You gotta be quick.
We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda or for further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ooh, backup. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
John seconds.
Thank you, Dr. Raich, and was it Mr. Hibbs?
No.
Mr. Will. No fights, gentlemen. Now vote, please. All vote in the affirmative, thank you. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and next we bring a presentation of our strategic plan and an update to that strategic plan, a brief presentation. No, a presentation. This is important work. As you know, we have a very bold strategic plan. This is our third one, and we're pretty much in the, kind of the beginning, close to the middle, and Dr. Wirth will give us an update on those strategies and, and give us an indication of where we are, so, Dr. Wirth.
All right, good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. As Dr. Cavassos indicated, I'm here to give an update on where we are with our strategic plan. As a reminder to the public, our strategic plan is called Powered by Possibilities and extends from 2022 to 2027, so I'm gonna be sharing primarily where we are in terms of the work for year one and the planning we're doing for the second year, which is already underway. So, I thought I would start off by sharing the quote that we've articulated in the past that Dr. Cavassos shared, which is really about optimism and the reason why we are doing a strategic plan here in Arlington I S D. And it's really about this idea of doubling down to our, to reach our vision and our goal to reach 100% when it comes to our students and their outcomes. The purpose of the plan really is to define very specific strategies and to develop what we call specific results that really help determine what we do in terms of our day-to-day work and actions so that we can actually accomplish our goal aligned to this call to action, which is to create a high-performing culture, organizational culture, that supports leaders who work to establish systems of behavior that guarantee opportunities for our students to engage in active learning. When we developed the strategic plan, it really outlines for us our map that we use to guide our, our direction and helps us think about things from a backwards design perspective, where we think about the endpoint we're trying to get to and what supports and things we need to put in place to reach that target. Our goal in Arlington I S D is that 100% of our students graduate exceptionally prepared, and so, as we've talked about many, many times, we've had to dialogue and ideate about what it means to be exceptionally prepared, and we believe that we can accomplish this by providing every student, family, and staff member with access to opportunities, resources, and supports, while also collectively addressing and overcoming barriers to close the gaps of achievement that exist among them and to extend pathways towards academic excellence. When we thought about what it means to be exceptionally prepared, we thought, how do you not only acquire the academic knowledge and skills that you need, but how do you also acquire what we call life-ready skills or soft skills that you can apply in any circumstance once you leave us and go on to your post-secondary life? That generated a profile of a learner and six specific skills that we're trying to develop through our classroom instruction and other experiences. Students learning how to communicate effectively, learning how to collaborate with one another, to think critically, to solve problems, to regulate themselves, and to model responsible citizenship in a diverse community and world. And we do this by leveraging what we call best practices, 12 research-based best practices that have been demonstrated to show, to help students become successful in the classroom, and through the leveraging of these best practices, teach kids how to acquire these soft skills. So, the way I kind of like to describe it is the learning, the content areas are almost a means to an end. You learn to acquire these skills by, by being actively engaged in the learning process as a student. In our strategic plan, there are four specific strategy or focus areas. One is specifically connected to a personalized learning experience for students that's founded in best practices, and it's really focused around this idea of not only growing academically, but also addressing any unfinished learning that was generated. I think the important thing to, to give context around this strategic plan is when it was initially designed, there was thoughts about our current context and how do you address that, and COVID was just on the cusp, but we were just on the cusp of getting out of the, the COVID pandemic. We also are working to strategically align our initiatives to not only increase student achievement, but also to increase focus, both for students and staff, and to reduce burnout. We know that in the education world right now, teachers and staff, it's tiring, and many have, are choosing different options, and we want to ensure that Arlington I S D is an ideal place for people to want to come and work and serve students. We also are working to prioritize the social, emotional well-being of our students, staff, and teachers and guarantee that all students and parents and staff have equitable access and knowledge around what programs are available and what resources they can access to, to be successful in those programs. This is a reminder of the timeline of implementation, and what you'll notice on each of the timelines is, which is typically different than the last strategic plan, is we start in January and in December. This strategic plan was adopted in December or right after December, and that's when we initiated our work. So, the discussion items that I'm gonna talk about tonight about projects were started in January of 2022, and then this January 2023, we started the launching of the work for 2020, the, the second year, which is now moving towards the 23, 24 school year. So, each school year, there's like an overlap of the two different years. In year one, these are the projects that we've been working on or projects connected to these specific results, outcomes. I won't go through each of them right now, because I will do that independently, individually as I go through each of the slides, but the point I wanted to generate is that they're so interconnected with each other. As we started the work, what we realized is that the, the specific result seems like it's very easy and it's direct in terms of what it's asking for, but when we started breaking down those specific results, we realized that there were some projects that were redundant in other areas, and we tried to find a way to streamline those and also to articulate very specifically what the breakdown needs to look like so the work can be done well. So, what you'll see as I'm, the cadence of the slides as I'm moving along is I'll articulate what the specific result is, and then I'll highlight what the projects are that are connected to that specific result, and then I'll give you specific details around each of those projects. So, the first one is about implementing best practices and the active learning cycle to provide personalized learning for all students. And this really is about three different projects. One is the professional learning connected to make that happen, the implementation supports that are being put in place, and then how are we measuring and monitoring the effectiveness of each of those two things? And in, in response to the, the best practices, I just want to notate, I articulated at the front of the presentation, there were 12. What we're really focused on right now are the, are these initial four. Standards alignment, assessment, informative feedback, differentiation, scaffolding, and small group instruction, and the reason we're starting with those four is because those really lay the foundation for effective instruction, and teachers who have mastered those specific best practices are best prepared to initiate mastering other best practices. So, the first area is around professional learning, and what the team has been working on is a two-year active learning cycle opt-in induction program that's really providing students, teachers with job-embedded coaching to implement that. This is a little different. We call it A L C 2.0 because it allows teachers and campuses to make a decision about if they, about how they want to leverage their implementation of the best practices, and if they want to do it within the cycle of active learning cycle, there's a process to help them do that. One of the, the things that we've been doing as we've been designing this induction program is working on embedding a crosswalk for professional learning so that the teacher and the campuses can see how all the different parts of the organization are aligned to the specific best practices that they're working on. So, the sample item that you see on your slide in front of you is around small group instruction. You'll see on, underneath that small group, you'll see specific components of the rubric around behaviors connected to that, to that best practice, and then underneath it are some of the initiatives that are aligned to that best practice. We're also in the process of working on developing a toolkit for parents so they can understand the experience their students are having in the classroom and what they can expect from that experience. And then the, the design and, and implementation of what we're calling look-for is, what specific things can leadership look for to know whether it's going well or not and how to support their teachers in their implementation of that practice. These are just some artifacts that give you a sense about some of the things we've done. We are launching, or we have launched, an internal website on the Internet for, for teachers and staff. Because it is an opt-in model, we want to support them, but we want them to also have an access and understanding about what the model is. So, what you don't see on this far right-hand side on the screen, which is part of the Internet website, is there's, there's an opportunity to watch a video to get in some initial background, but then there are buttons where they can say, I'd like more information, or I'm ready to, to opt in now, and then we kind of go from there. What you'll see also are pictures of teachers. There's a quote from one of the teachers that, that experienced, did the five-day training. It's a day five of our first A L C unit, and it feels like true A L C. Students were unsure about the style of learning on day one, but now they love it. And I think that's one of the biggest feedback points that we have about active learning cycle is students are much more autonomous in their learning. Their learning is connected to their day-to-day life, and they're excited about it. We currently have eight campuses that have the majority of their teams implementing active learning cycle. Two campuses have opt-in teachers, and there's a total of about 120 teachers across the district that are utilizing the active learning cycle. The next is around implementation support around best practices, and this, this item is really focused around professional learning. What we've been working on is making sure there's a connection and alignment among all the district exchange, exchange opportunities and connected to our comprehensive literacy plan and math plan. The best practices, as they're designed, are actually agnostic to content areas. What we've tried to do is help teachers see and understand through coaching, how do you apply the best practice in the context of effective literacy instruction and effective mathematics instruction? We've developed anchor courses so that people have a strong understanding of what the best practices are, these specific four. The Canvas courses that are connected to those anchor courses are, are on your screen in front of you. We've also worked on providing refresher courses, so as people become more proficient in their application of the best practice in their classroom, we want to differentiate their opportunity to continue to professionally grow and develop on top of their embedded coaching. So, there are refresher and advanced courses available. And then also, we've been working on a planning tool to help connect that professional learning to lesson design for tier-one instruction. What, what does quality lesson look like and how do you design it utilizing the best practice? One thing that we're actively trying to do is find ways to do, get routine feedback from teachers about how it's going in principle so that we can customize our support for them along the way, and then, of course, provide accountability and support in the implementation process. A few more projects around implementation is when it comes to coaching. So, we talked a little bit about professional learning, and now I want to share a little bit about coaching. Coaching is, in essence, job-embedded professional development. It's, it's an opportunity for a teacher to reflect on his or her practice and to implement that practice in their classroom and get better and better using evidence to guide whether they're actually making growth or not. So, what we've been working on is prioritizing our calibration of coaching and walkthroughs to promote some clarity of what practice should look like in the classroom. That way, when a leader goes into the classroom and is observing classroom instruction, they are seeing and looking for the same things that a coach would be coaching and helping a teacher do. That way, there is unified support for the, for the teacher, and they're not receiving different feedback from different places. We've also worked on establishing coaching schedules so that coaches and teachers know when their coach is coming, and they can expect that when the conversation is happening. It's not random conversations or pop-ins, they're actually scheduled visits. And then we've also been working on aligning some instructional resources by, by providing and working on exemplar lessons and best practice look-for questions so that if teacher is implementing best practices in the classroom, there are lessons that actually, that teachers can use and see as models. And finally, the last one is really around marketing and communication. Best practices is the foundation for quality learning in the classroom, and we want to make sure that everyone knows about them and can access information at their own will. So, we've created a best practice hub, which makes it, which is available for teachers so they can go in there and learn the information on their own time if they want. We also have an overview video that really focuses on how you personalize learning for students in the classroom. We are creating a public-facing website so that parents have access to information about what, what practices teachers are implementing in the classroom as they're giving their children a classroom instruction. And then we're also working on a recognition system. One of the things we, we do in education often is we'll celebrate a teacher of the year or we'll celebrate these other awards. What we want to do is celebrate people for being very effective in doing the very job that they come to work to do every day. And so, what the team has been working on are ways to support them. So, this is just a quick snapshot of something we're getting ready to launch in the fall, which is an example of like a teacher certificate that they can hang, where every time they earn a level-three badge, where, where, which is the level where you demonstrate proficiency, they'll receive recognition from the superintendent and myself. They'll receive an icon of their badge that they can, they can place on their certificate with space for all 12 of them to be earned. We're gonna, we will have a banner for the school. As teachers become more and more proficient around implementing best practices, the school will be recognized for that as a way to incentivize people and help them also feel acknowledged for the hard work they're doing to, to teach students very well. This area is specifically focused around measuring and monitoring effectiveness. If you put things in practice, we want to make sure that you're implementing them with fidelity and that they're actually having an impact on outcomes. So, what we've been working on is a walkthrough process that's really aligned to best practices and the campus, the, I'm sorry, the comprehensive literacy and math plans. And that's back to what I was saying before, so that principals and leaders have insights about what specific things they should be looking for and how they can support teachers in their implementation of those things. We've also are working on identifying and creating a calendar for data collection, so we have a cadence at which we look at those things. And then, of course, providing in, in-person support. So, not only the coaches on campuses, but our district-level coaches going to campuses to support people in person, and then providing a, a portal that helps us monitor the quality. And then providing a, um, um, a portal that helps us monitor the quality and effectiveness of the coaching program. Um, we have a portal, it's being redesigned, um, in order for us to not only help the coaches, help the teachers. But also to monitor the impact that those coaching sessions are actually having on learning outcomes. The second, uh, area is really around designing and implementing additional instructional processes, including enrichment and intervention. Um, designed to address unfinished learning and to help students meet grade-level expectations. And the two projects that are around this one are differentiated accelerated instruction and progress monitoring. So around data-driven and planning, uh, we have really worked on doing a couple of things, and one is our report site. So, uh, Dr. Lopez and her team have, uh, are the people responsible for, uh, all the coding and all the data input that actually generate the report site. And one thing that I'm really proud of, uh, about Dr. Lopez and her team is they've, they've worked really hard to make sure that the report site has reports that are accessible to principals. About what they want to see and how, what information they need to make decisions. So they're constantly iterating these reports to make sure they're as user-friendly as possible. And, uh, so that principals have access to the, the information they need to make decisions. One of the upgrades to the report site that they're currently working on is visualization. So if you want to just picture like a dashboard, right now, many of the reports are tabular in nature. But, um, it's easy sometimes to, or it's quicker to make decisions or at least get a sense about how things are going. If that tabular data is then generated into something that's more visual in nature, like graphs or pie charts or things like that. So her team are leveraging a pro, a Power BI, which is from Microsoft, to take those tabular, um, reports and generate, um, dashboards that actually have visualizations to make the, the job a little easier. The other thing that, uh, we're utilizing is, um, Edugent. So it's called Edugent, in Arlington, we branded Polaris, but that's, it's the same thing. And, uh, we are leveraging Edugent to not only disaggregate our data from their curriculum assessments. But also, um, monitoring our implementation of, um, high-quality tutoring through House Bill forty-five, forty-five. And, uh, how students are progressing, uh, through interventions as they're monitored through our MTSS process. The next area is around differentiated accelerated instruction. And there are, uh, I, the, what I wanted to, uh, separate for this project is there are some things that pertain to both elementary and secondary, and then there are some things that are just secondary. So for elementary and secondary, we're really, uh, working on trying to identify and provide the schools with a district-endorsed, uh, set of resources. Um, right now, we have resources that are across campuses, but campuses also purchase things on their own. Um, when you have a variety of all these resources, while that sounds good and they, they should be available, the challenge is, is when you have the level of mobility that we have and students go from one school to the next. If they're in an effect, in an effective intervention process in one school and it's not available at the next school, you kind of have to start over. So what we're working on is articulating a vetted research-based list that we want all schools to be using. Um, make sure that they're, they're resourced with those things. And then creating a vetting process that if additional resources want to be purchased through a school, uh, we can verify that they are research-based and they're actually going to make, um, a difference for those students. We also are working on standardizing the INE structure and embed that into the master schedule. INE stands for intervention enrichment. So, uh, at the elementary level, the intent is to make sure that there are opportunities within the math and the reading block for students who need intervention to receive it. And for those who are already at grade level to be advan-, uh, to be accelerated through, um, enrichment. Also, housing all of our data and, uh, data in a s- one centralized platform, which is a reference to what I just was talking about. And then, of course, regular routine progress monitoring meetings that are conducted during, um, the grading period, so that we can make sure kids are being tracked. In secondary, we're also working on, um, redesigning some interventions, um, through a retester course. And what, the best way I can describe that is there are a volume of students that, um, are not successful in passing their EOC specifically in algebra and/or English one and two. And so what we're working on is identifying which students would best benefit in a specialized course to help them overcome that challenge. Uh, it won't, it won't be for every student that doesn't pass the EOC. Um, there are some kids that pass the course but fail the EOC, some that fail the course and the EOC. And so we want to customize the level of support needed, um, based on what we just identifies their need. Also, we're re-examining summer school, um, and how to address the summer school, um, need for students who are, um, EOC retesters. The other area is around progress monitoring, and you've probably heard us talk a lot about, um, MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support. This has been an initiative we've been working on for some time. Um, this year, as part of the strategic plan, what we've been, um, doing is rolling out, uh, MTSS modules to provide consistent training and support for campuses across the district. Um, our initial launch was around, um, monitoring students who are at the tier-three level. And starting next year, it'll be both tier-two and tier-three. Um, we've been, been providing the training and support for both teachers and leaders. The team has worked on an MTSS guidebook, which outlines all the components of MTSS, um, on both academic and behavioral sides. Role clarity for what roles people play in, in, in monitoring and ensuring that students are progressing. And, um, providing some, like I said, some continuity across the system. And also, um, a, a line to MTSS is this idea that I was mentioning earlier, which is really making sure that the resources, even the technology resources and interventions that are available to students. Are vetted so that we, um, can ensure they're getting the best, uh, quality outcomes. The third one is around instructional design support for teachers, and the areas around this one are really around planning time and curricular resources. And the first one I'm going to talk about is around instructional design and how we're trying to help, uh, teachers. One of the things we're working on is making sure that we work to design our curriculum, resources and documents in a way that teachers find useful. And so we've talked a lot about, um, about re- initiating and receiving routine feedback from teachers about how that, that, that's going. When it comes to instructional design, what we've been looking for is making sure that there's an alignment between the, the things that we're asking teachers to do in the classroom and the district initiatives. And, and, and highlighting in the documents those components, and I'll, I'll share an example in just a minute. Also been working on what we call content roadmaps. So content roadmaps is a base, is a training we provide every six weeks to teachers to give them a preview of what's coming in the curriculum. And to talk to them about how to overcome some typical, um, challenges that students have in the, in whatever area of the curriculum that we're about to, um, come into. The difference between this year and previous years around content roadmaps is what we did is we took a cross-departmental kind, uh, kind of approach to curricular roadmap. So when a teacher comes to the training, you, they're receiving training from, um, not only the curriculum department and people who are content savvy. But also special education, uh, specialists and world languages specialists. So that all student groups who have all different sorts of needs in the classroom are being considered in the teacher's training around the implementation of that curriculum. We've also been working on a design framework to help support planning. This has actually been a collaboration, um, from the Office of Leadership. So Jessica Stilet, who works on the leadership pathways, as she's been working with level leads and the curriculum department, designing a framework to help support teachers in their planning. We've also, uh, worked on articulating some of these resources more, um, explicitly in Curriculum Central and from TRS. And then we've made some, um, uh, updated, uh, updates to our instructional-focused documents. What you see in front of you is an example of look fours that were designed to help with leaders in the campus. Um, what we've been working on is our implementation of components of the, uh, comprehensive literacy and math plans. Uh, so what we've been providing, uh, principals are very specific ideas, guiding questions and look fours they should be seeing when they're in the classroom, so they can support teachers. Planning time. This is the thing everybody is wanting, and we've been talking about it for years. Um, and this one really is focused at elementary. Um, and the reason I, I highlight that for people who are listening who may not know, in secondary, there, there's, um, built into our schedule more time for planning, but just by the way the schedule works. But in elementary, you have multiple planning, you have multiple preps, and you still have four hundred and thirty-five minutes to teach, and there's no more time in the day. So how do you do that? So what we've done is we've been looking at how planning time is being used and when people, what, what schools are actually good models for providing more time for teachers to plan. And when I say planning, I'm not talking about just, I'm not talking about PLCs, I'm actually talking about more time to plan. Uh, so what we've been working on are trying to establish expectations and guidelines for how there can be some uniformity across the system in the design and, and, uh, uh, creation of more, of more planning for teachers. Um, we're working right now on a model that will provide the principals with some ideas about how to strategically utilize other supports in the building. To, uh, provide or create time for teachers to, um, work on planning while their students are engaged in other learning activities. Uh, once we land on our model, we'll provide those to, to campuses and help them think about how they routinely, uh, schedule that for the, in their buildings. And then to help with, like, with PLCs, uh, as you know, we've been talking a lot about DDI, uh, a structured framework for how that happens in the PLC time. So this one is a really, um, I think a real win. It not only provides, um, meaningful use of PLC time, but also increases, um, opportunities for teachers to, to plan for their instruction. The next one's really around curriculum resources, and, uh, we've been spending some time reviewing our curricular resources and thinking about where we can enhance those resources and where they can be better. We've also, um, working on identifying and mapping explicit connections between the initiatives within the system and the resources that are actually available. Um, we are currently updating our pacing calendar. Our current documents tell teachers or provide teachers with information such as how long a specific unit should take. What we're doing now, though, is we're at, we're putting that on a calendar, so they know what day it would start and what day it would finish. Uh, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you, that you're never going to go a little faster, a little slower, depending upon the needs of your kids. It just helps the teacher and the principals and everyone know what, how fast or slow they may need to be going, based on where their endpoint needs to be when their kids are going to be assessed on STAR. Um, we also have, um, been working to articulate recommended resources for teachers to use to teach specific standards, so ready-set things for them to use. And then, uh, as you know, um, the commissioner just published the approved list for phonics instruction. And so we've been working on our supports to make that even more robust. So I'm going to go through a couple of those things in terms of visuals, just to give you some ideas. So this in front of you, it, what you can see here is an example of a draft of one of the pacing calendars. Um, as you can see, they're color-coded by when those units would start. If you actually click on, uh, like where the, the, the blue bracket is, what that would do is take you to the link that's there. And then it, what it will do for the teachers is it takes the learning progressions, which is the order in which you teach that unit, and bundles them together. So it will tell the teacher this, if you're, when you teach this unit, there are five steps in the learning progressions. This bundle standards will take you, this, this will take you two days to do, this will take you one day to do, this will take you three days to do. And if you're following in that order, it'll finish in that amount of time. So if your, if your unit was going to take you seven days to get through, we've clustered the, they bundled the learning progressions in bundles by days. So a teacher would have a sense about how long they should expect a certain bundle to take to get through that unit. Um, of course, we want teachers to feel free to differentiate for their students, which means some classes will go faster and some will go slower. The intent is to, to help teachers have a sense about how long it will take when they plan. The other thing you'll notice here is this is a copy, a, a screenshot of one of our instructional-focused documents. Um, we've always had priority content and, and resources, uh, in our instructional-focused documents. Uh, we've done that since COVID, um, to help accelerate learning, since students were behind. What you're going to notice on these documents that's a little different is, uh, these little icons. And what the icons are designed to do is to help teachers know when specific strategies for sheltered instruction, for example, or where authentic technology integration is already occurring in that, in that item. If it's already there, the icon's there. So I'll give you an example. If I'm a, if I'm a teacher and I want to implement the activity that's listed there that says tap and talk and paragraph frame. That embedded in that specific activity are, are the, uh, are the sheltered instruction strategies and experiences that kids need already there. Um, so it, the idea really is to help teachers plug and play in an easier way, um, how to integrate technology, how to address their special populations in meaningful ways and have the resources right at their fingertips. Another example that I wanted to highlight is the way we're, um, thinking about, um, phonics instruction. So our adopted one, which is actually on the commissioner's list, is HMH. Um, several teachers across the district use Hagerty, which is another, um, product that people use, um, but that is not on the commissioner's list. So, um, we will continue with HM, uh, HMH. Um, people may choose to use Hagerty as a supplement on top of it, but you can't supplant it. Um, but what we've done is we want to simplify this process for teachers, because, um, the science of teaching reading really focuses a lot on phonemic awareness and phonics and the structure of reading. And so this example here is a document that teach, that the, um, curriculum department is putting together for, um, phonics instruction. Uh, and what you'll, the way you would read this is in week one, um, you would click, there are five specific days. So you'll see one-point-one, one-point-two, one-point-three, one-point-four. And when the teacher clicks on that, the lesson is there, like the activity is there. And then, um, below it, if that, if that week they're working on short A, the books connected to short A are there, they can, they can, they can access. And you kind of go through it, it's very, there's very specific things for, um, um, students' individual practice and handwriting practice. The idea was to spell it out as simple as possible, because the expectation is that students engage in this kind of learning or this portion of their learning at least thirty minutes on a daily basis. A couple other quick things, um, I'll highlight is when I mentioned on the last document, you saw the icon of the computer. When they click on that, it takes them to what you see here in the green, which is a plug-and-play, which is an actual lesson plan that teachers can use to implement that specific, uh, standard. Uh, but the lesson plan is completely designed for them. So what we're trying to do is not write lesson plans for teachers, but to give them exemplars and resources that they can use or they can adapt, but, um, that access is there. The last thing I want to highlight is the book, uh, that you see here on the left, which is around shifting the balance. You're familiar with that one, okay. The purpose of this is The Pendulum Swings in Literacy Education, um, it has forever. We went from whole language to, oh, that's bad, to balanced literacy, and now we're in the middle, which is all about the science of teaching reading. We know there are practices in, in balanced literacy, such as guided reading, that are really important as kids progress through learning. And we also know that you have to really get down to the nuts and bolts of actually understanding how letters create sounds and sounds combined to make words, things like that. This is a book that we're kind of, the team is using to kind of leverage their thinking about how you combine those two parts of literacy instruction. The balanced side with the science of teaching reading, because our, our teachers are having to make that shift. And so we want to keep that in the back of our minds while we're designing, um, our professional learning and our documents. The next strategy is around our return on investment. And this is really about how do we prioritize, one, what we're going to, we utilizing in our system, and if we're getting the big spank for our money, our buck when it comes to money. So what we've been working on around academic return on investment is, one, establishing standards for when a, when something is ready to be studied. So one of the things that Dr. Lopez's team has put together is an evaluation of program readiness. And there are five components to that that are looked at. And the idea really is, is you really have to meet all five of these benchmarks before your program is really eligible to be studied and know whether it makes, whether you can say it makes a difference or not. And those are really around things like making sure the program model is clear, that it's stable, it's been in the system for some time. There's a sufficient sample size of populations that are actually utilizing, so you can make an assessment about it. Um, whether there's data capacity, meaning this, the staff's been trained on, on how to use it, that there's infrastructure and process systems in place. And leadership, meaning that there's buy-in from the leaders and, and program owners about how, about the program itself and that it's working. So once we reach, uh, once we identify the list of, of what are the main levers we want to, we want to pull, which right now, um, the team is actually gathering, um, programs for us to consider, um, to evaluate. The first thing that we will do is compare them to these standards and then identify the ones we want to actually run through the ROI process to decide whether there's an implementation issue. Or if it has been implemented well, is it giving us the result we're looking for? And what decisions do we need to make about expanding it, minimizing it, or cutting it out? The next one is, um, three-point-one, which is around differentiating and expanding or monitoring resources for students and staff around their social and emotional health. Um, there are four projects connected to this. One is about resources, one is around counseling services, one's around our, um, culture of care, which you've heard before. And then the other one is around what we call, what's called trust-based relational intervention, or TBRI. So the first one is around, um, mental health. And one of the things, this, this came out of our strategic planning, as you well know, because we were just coming out of the cusp, off the cusp of COVID. And there was, uh, mental health, um, and emotional needs on both the staff and the student side. So, um, some of the things that the team have worked on is a staff wellness fair to really help educate people on the resources and tools that were at their fingertips to help themselves. Um, provide a guidebook for students and parents around what agencies they have access to, and what are some supports and tips that parents could utilize at the home, um, when they're not with us at school. We've also focused on, uh, counseling services, and I think that the unique thing that's part of this outside of regular, um, counseling that you would see in the academic environment are therapeutic environments. So we have initiated a, uh, a daycare clinic. Uh, this year, it has served seven-hundred-and-seventy-one students. There are currently fifty-four on the waitlist. Uh, we have thirty-one therapists. We're trying to think about how we can expand it to bring it closer to the neighborhoods, because right now it's sitting at six-hundred New York, which is a great centralized place. But we're wanting to get it closer to where people live. Um, so we're thinking about where that, where, how that would go. And collaborating with organizations like University of Texas Arlington Social Work Department to think about how can we expand opportunities for infusing more therapists if possible. expand opportunities for infusing more therapists if possible. We are working on marketing and helping people know this is a resource that's available to them. And then the way that it works is that there's one intake that includes the parent, and then the students get five free sessions, and then we refer them out. And that gives, it's an opportunity for kids to get their grounding before they can move on to some other services. The other is culture of care, which is, as you've heard this before, the district has done a kindness campaign. We've worked on the Year of Kindness. We've incorporated adult SEL through incentives, and then we have an internet site around this culture of care. The whole idea is really about providing resources to help staff think about how you can incorporate caring acts and self-care activities into your own well-being and the well-being of your students. And the last one I want to talk about is what we're, what's called trust-based relational intervention. And this is an attachment-based, trauma-informed intervention. If you know, if you've heard about TBRI, it states that it's specifically for students who have early harm or have toxic stress or trauma, but what research has shown is that really the interventions and the strategies that are utilized in TBRI are actually good for everyone. And so this TBRI is actually founded and based upon three principles. One's around connecting, like how do you connect with your students? One's around empowering, which is really focused on the physiological needs. How do you make sure that all the things you need as a human being, the Maslow part of you, is taken care of so that you can be ready to be empowered to actually learn and engage in that process? And then the other one is around correcting, like how do you help students think about their own emotional and behavioral self-regulation? And so you can see several of the things on there on the slide that are connected to trust-based relational intervention. Currently, we have 14 practitioners in our system. Three of our PBIS specialists are being trained. All of our counselors have been trained, and there's also the components of TBRI have been embedded into our PBIS modules to help teachers implement those things in their classroom. So next steps, we're on year two, and this got launched in January. So these are the four, these are the four strategies that we're going to be focused on now, and there are being, there are projects being developed in each of these things. So when we come give you the next update, you'll see each one of these with two or three things under each one of those things. I just want to remind everybody that we're utilizing a project management process to design our projects, so that there's a sponsor and there's a timeline. We're actually utilizing Asana now, that we just got Asana. So we're utilizing that to help us manage projects. The great thing about Asana, and I know you know about it, which is awesome, is that you can see at any point in time how things are going, what percentage has been accomplished, and where the sticking points are, so you can coordinate your work a lot more effectively, and it brings a lot of visibility to the work. You're not dependent upon one-on-one meetings. You can log in and look at any time. So that's kind of where we are, and any questions that I can answer for you?
Do I have any trustees with questions? Ms. Mays?
Does anyone have questions? I just have a comment. First of all, you had me at supporting and acknowledging our teachers and adding planning time, and then you dropped the mic on our counseling services. Now, I was going to give you more props, because I actually thought you said we added saunas.
Oh, no.
I'll take that comment. So I just wanted to have that comment, and I just wanted to say thank you. You will be the last person to be able to give a discussion report for me sitting up here on the dais. So, thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Don't worry about going all the way back to this slide, but when we were talking about INE time, intervention and extension, and some campuses, I know they call it WIN time, because students get what I need. I wanted to get more clarification on that being embedded in their master schedule, because I thought that this time was already embedded in the master schedule. So can you elaborate a little bit on that?
No, it is embedded in their master schedule. What we're trying to, so every campus does it, we don't have anything that says that everyone has to do it the exact same way. It is embedded in our programming. So when we think about mathematics, for example, there are 90 minutes of math and 30 minutes of that should be intervention or enrichment. Same thing with reading. It's 120 minutes, 30 minutes of that should be that. So it is embedded. What we're trying to do is provide some standardization about how that's done well. There are models across some schools that are actually doing it really, really well, and so it's elevating some of those things. But you're correct, it is part of our system, and it's been there for some time.
And I know that as a district, we've strived, we've strived to have that serve students at their individual needs. Some students get speech services during that time. Some students get extension tutoring, and the aim is that students will not miss core content. Is that still kind of our goal?
That is correct, which is why it's embedded. And so it's happening all at the same time. That's the idea behind it. For example, gifted and talented students are pulled during their, for their DT time, during that time is the ideal. That's a portion of it. So yeah, it should be, it should not supplant their time in core instruction, tier-one core instruction.
Okay, that's wonderful to hear. I love all the gains being made on the curriculum central front. Really excited about the direction we're heading with phonics, and it really is a shift. You need human capital, you need funding, and the commissioner's list, not everything has been released yet, but I'm very excited about the efforts being made, and I don't, I really, this is me speaking for myself, but I really don't think there's any instructional investment that's more worthy of early literacy, because that is the foundation for everything else. And I just wanted to have, I had one question about that. You mentioned that Hagerty was favored by some of our primary teachers, and although that did not make the commissioner's list, did you mention that that can still be used as a supplemental resource?
Yeah, so we're talking about that right now. Obviously, you know, we can't supplant for what's considered on the commissioner's list. But the way that we're kind of discussing it right now is, we want to individualize. So I'm going to excuse some, one little thing about, so one of the things about Hagerty is it's a lot about using your body to show movement when you're teaching kids about phonics, right? So some students may need that to actually grasp the concept. So if teachers have something they could supplement their learning, there's no problem, because we just want kids to move. What we will say, though, is that we have a curriculum that we expect everyone to follow. If you want to supplement to make sure that Stephen's moving, then there are other resources you can still use to supplement that learning.
Awesome. And again, just one more thing I really wanted to commend you and all of our staff for, and our superintendent, is the continuation and the work toward growing our care clinic. That has really been a game changer for our district, and I really hope that we can work toward expanding. And, you know, we have a lot of interest on this initiative from other districts, and when we go to SLI and other conferences, we get a lot of questions about it. And I've, you know, I've really been proud of our district offering this. The fact that you get free sessions with those licensed professionals is so wonderful. And I just hope that we can continue to make those efforts to keep this going. And that's it. That's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Any other trustees with questions or comments? Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Hearing you go through all these things brings me back to the PDC, the unveiling, the final walkthrough, the steps with all the stakeholder input, all the different levels and layers that this plan encompasses. It is, I think, unique in our state. I've had the opportunity to be part of all of our strategic plans that we've had in this district, and this one on the surface, at a quick glance by most, you're like, oh, maybe that doesn't seem like there's a lot there. But there is so much, there is more embedded here, and I just want to commend you, commend your team, the superintendent, the thoughtful process to phase this appropriately to achieve, hopefully, the maximum results for achievement. It just blows me away. I really appreciate it. With that said, with the things that you presented here tonight were, and I think I already know the answer, were, as far as stakeholders involved in this process, were there teachers involved, lead teachers, campus administrators? Can you explain that to the group?
So it really depends on which project you're working on, but every project has a project team. So the way it's structured is there's a sponsor who oversees a portfolio, has project managers, and then there's a project team. And the project team is cross-departmental and includes all sorts of layers. So yes. And then also, depending upon which project, like the, what I want to say, the output that we're looking for, there's feedback loops that we can get information from. So we, lead teachers provide feedback along the way. We've done, like I'll say, for example, the curriculum, the curriculum team went and met with all the lead teachers to try to gather input around how things, what we're producing, is it helpful or not? So I think that's the key, is there either have people at different layers of the organization actually embedded in the project team itself and/or solicit feedback along the way.
That's excellent. It really is excellent. One of the things that you mentioned during the presentation, which can't go understated, is the equity that's built into this plan. That was a strategic focus of this board, of this district. This happened, of course, through COVID, coming out of COVID, with so many things happening in our nation, we have always approached our plans with a focus of all students. I think this plan specifically targets and identifies all students at the same time, and that is no easy task. So thank you for that. When it comes time, as strategic plans go, the ones that are utilized effectively, appropriately, they are fluid. They, we may have, as we've already had, some starts stops, but as far as the return on investment that you were talking about, you know, this whole process is, you know, Deming's Plan Do Check Act. So with that return, that check part, at what point will that happen? From a governance level, that's what I'm most interested in, so that we can evaluate those metrics, see what you're doing on evaluating those metrics, and when, if there's a necessary need to shift the priority or the focus.
So that's a good question. It really would, as I would say, depend upon which specific strategy you're looking for. And the reason I say that is because as part of the ROI strategy, part of it is twofold. One is making sure that the system has specific projects that are prepped, and they're being done with meeting those five criteria, so that Dr. Lopez's team can actually make an evaluation and give you meaningful information, data to draw conclusions, or at least hear recommendations. And the other part of it, too, is it's a new way of infusing a culture around budget planning, which has been really helpful. There's a process that we have to go through to orient even our district leadership, and I'm not speaking just about cabinet-level members, but just across the district, around how do we make decisions specifically about utilizing limited resources to leverage those things that are going to give us the most bang for our buck, so to speak, and let go of those things that we may like but are not yielding the results we're looking for. And so that's a culture shift that we're working on, too. So I think I'd be able to better answer your question once we are able to articulate specifically what we're going to start measuring first, which is what we're literally trying to figure out right now. And then what the plan is, is to utilize that as a first run-through to see how it works, and then continue to do that over and over and over again, so that it becomes just integrated into our culture.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and I, what I foresee coming out of this process is, as is usual for this district, to be an exemplar and be a benchmark for other districts, other strategic plans in their design process of how to elevate students and how to elevate our staff and our community to achieve what we're all in it for, which is the outcomes to make these amazing, responsible, contributing citizens in society. I look forward to the future presentations. As far as the cadence, I don't recall, I should, when we get these strategic plan updates, are we getting them annually, biannually? I don't remember what the plan was.
In the future, it'll be weekly. No, I'm kidding. I don't want to set that up. No, that's not fair to the new person. No, no, no.
That's not fair to this person.
Well, that's true. It's not fair to Steve. Yeah, the cadence, no. No, no, no. So it's usually quarterly, but I think as we started, it's not that fast, because there's a lot of preparation, like the team selection and all that, but it would be in a quarterly basis.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, that's great. And what I would hope to see, of course, is the next, but also that return on investment data, and not necessarily the big shifts of, I mean, sure, we want to see those, but maybe as background information, the data on the tweaks, the modifications. That is the secret sauce in making this work. But from a governance level, we just watch you guys do that work. We just want to hear about it.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Raich. And to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Raich was saying, I can't tell you how many trustees from other districts have told me that they look at our strategic plan to plan their own, and I think that's the best compliment we could have. It's a solid plan, it's a comprehensive plan, and we know that it works. So thank you, Dr. Wertz, for you and your team for putting so much effort into this and helping us kind of understand it and explain it to us. Y'all are doing an amazing job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we're going to change the order of the agenda just a little bit. We'll do the open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have two registered speakers. One is here in person, and one was going to join virtually.
All right, thank you. One second. Is Megan Davis here? Megan Davis? Tamara Medlock?
Ms. Medlock was the one that was going to be virtual, and our webmaster's letter says she is not in the.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Seeing that we have no requesters to speak, we will move on. We'll move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavasos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And so I'd like to share just a little bit of information about our district and save the best for last, our recognition. So we'll start with a lot of congratulations this week. I want to start with a student and a teacher, and you see them on the screen there. John's elementary, third grader Aubrey Washington, was named a national winner by the Read 180 program. Aubrey was one of 12 students nationally honored for exceptional success in reading improvement. She's the first national winner the district has had since 2016, because we've had one before. Aubrey's reading growth has been amazing, and we're very proud of her. The same goes for Dunn Elementary Student Support Interventionist Heather Juarez. She was honored by Read 180 with a Read 180 Educator Award. That honor goes to an educator who demonstrates it's never too late to open the doors for academic success for students in reading. Congratulations to both of them. Congratulations to their success. We'll keep going with the theme of congratulations and head over to Sam Houston High School. Last week, I was able to spend quite a bit of time, and there was a reason for that quite a bit of time, because there were so many kids there. The reason I was there was because we had students who were honored recipients of the TCU Community Scholars Program. Absolutely, Mr. Hibbs, absolutely. And for others who applied, for full, who applied, didn't get it, the Rhodes Scholar there, but they also got full rides because TCU was so impressed with their application. So that means 13 of the students who applied to be community scholars are headed to TCU. Those 13 alone earned more than $3 million in scholarship. That's a, yeah. That's a testament to the success of our students, the counselors, the SAM teachers, the principal, avid teachers, and all the team that works at Sam Houston High School. Congratulations to them and these wonderful students who shared on Facebook Live. They weren't nervous at all. They shared everything that they're going to do in the future, and this was natural for them. So congratulations to them. So, congratulations to them. I want to congratulate another student, uh, Charlie Vassar from Webb Elementary. You may have seen this because this has been making the rounds. Charlie came up with an idea of creating an eliminate stand over spring break and donating the money to those who need it. He ended up raising $157 for the Arlington Life Shelter. With the help of his teacher, Miss Davis, he made sure the money got in the hands and it started a trend. Others have donated to the cause, including Assistant Principal Brian Gomez, who happens to be right there in that picture. He matched Charlie's donation. The construction company that built Webb, uh, also did the same. And it all started because of Charlie's efforts. Way to go, Charlie. Last weekend was a busy weekend at the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center as they hosted the Family Expo and Resource Fair. Uh, it was spearheaded by our family and community engagement team. Aaron Perales was there and his team. Uh, and they had opportunities for students to find out about resources and trainings for families. Uh, there were workshops, panels, foods, music, a great partnership, uh, to put this, uh, uh, event together. All right, I better follow my script. We added something, so, or somebody added something, no. Okay, so, uh, as we get ready to close the year, it's teacher appreciation time. So, whether you're campus celebrating this or next week, please make sure to tell a teacher how special they are and how much they're loved. Especially in May, with kids, right? We have to tell them that they're loved. As we get closer to the end of the year, the students will tell them. But right now, it's the middle of May. But, uh, that they're loved and we love them and we want, uh, to make sure that the teachers feel our appreciation, but not just ours, but our community. So, teachers, happy, uh, teacher appreciation, uh, and, and enjoy the rest of this school year. All right, finally, I want to thank everyone who had a hand in, uh, my retirement celebration. And, uh, I just want to thank everyone from the board, uh, to everyone who was able to attend, and you'll see some pictures there. Um, the roast was fun. I, I usually am the one delivering that, but I had to sit there and take it, so, uh, and, and I did. Um, and, and so, these are my friends, or they were my friends, but, uh, well, you could tell how friendly they were. Uh, but it was touching to see so many people and I just appreciated, um, on behalf of our family, Nora, Teresa, Diego, and myself, uh, thank you for, for that special moment and making this a remarkable event. I've already said all my thank yous that night, so you know who you are, but, um, I sincerely appreciate it and I'm very humbled by the, uh, show of support and love, uh, and my love goes right back, so thank you. That concludes my report. President Fowler.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any, uh, school board members with reports? All right, well, it is time for some recognitions. We are now going to recognize two of our board members that are, um, outgoing, that have decided to move on, and that is trustees, Ms. Keisha Mays and Mr. John Hibbs. And before we present them with things and talk to them and, and give them our love, um, I think they would like to probably say... No, she wants to finish. Yes, yeah. So, I think they would, um, Ms. Mays, if you'll go to the podium? You want to do a podium or you want to stay here?
I want to look out.
Okay, all right, Ms. Mays, it's all... It's all yours, Ms. Mays.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Fowler. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share my gratitude this afternoon, this evening, for the trust that has been placed in me to serve this amazing school district and the community of Arlington ISD. Thank you to the individuals, there's too many to name, too many to name for this event, but that allotted time to me and encouraged me and supported me through my campaign and my time on this board. It has truly been an honor to dedicate my service and my commitment to the education of all students in AISD. I'm grateful for the nine years of service and the current and previous trustees, I see a few of you out there, that worked alongside me in this capacity. I was honored to serve as president for three years, of which two were doing, were during an extraordinarily difficult time. Although the time was difficult and there was really no precedent for COVID in education and really life, this board, this administration, the teachers, the staff, and the students dug really, really deep to navigate through those difficult times. My strong belief is that that navigation was made possible by working together, by listening to each other, and benefited from everyone's commitment of grace and respect to focus on what was best for our students during that time. My hope is that the students and the community recognize the importance of this integral partnership and commitment by all to educate, support, and keep the faith in everyone's ability to stay the course. Speaking of staying the course, one thing that has remained constant is the belief by our superintendent, Dr. Cavassos, that education remains the great equalizer, not only amongst ourselves but globally. An educated society means a more productive workforce. Education does still remain the great equalizer. And Dr. Cavassos, it has been an honor for me to serve alongside you. To the staff, bus drivers, maintenance operators, custodial staff, cafeteria workers, ground maintenance, thank you for showing up and helping to create an environment for our students to be successful and to take pride of their campuses. Thank you to our nurses, resource officers, librarians, counselors, coaches, secretaries, TAs, teachers, assistant principals, and principals for supporting our students academically and mentally every single day. What you do daily is not easy and we do not take the hard work for granted. We appreciate all of you. To the administrative staff and executive team led by our superintendent, thank you for keeping the focus on student achievement, supporting the staff and helping to sustain the core values of this district for the benefit of all of AISD students. And I must thank my amazing family for their love and support of my passion for students and this district and the time away from home, starting from PTA in kindergarten to serving on school district committees, community nonprofits, to being so elected nine years ago to serve as trustee. My husband has been supportive since day one. He listens to my ventings, it wasn't a lot. He, he has heard all my speeches, my thoughts, my ideas. Many times, my sons would say, "Mom, that, that's too much." Then they'd say, "Uh, how many more signs?" Then they ask, "Well, when are you going, when is the board going to put more candy in the vending machines?" But then they did grow up and they got older and they started saying, "Mom, you're doing a great job." And that meant the world to me. Uh, my three sons graduated from, uh, Farrell Elementary, Barnett Junior High, and graduated from Bowie High School. They are all products of AISD. And if I can just say for a moment, I'm so proud that one of my sons and his beautiful fiancee, who will be his wife next month, are both educators. Thank you. I want to give a little thanks to my dad, God rest his soul, for wanting me to be better when it came to education than the education he was able to receive. He loved Vince Lombardi's quote, "The only place where success comes before work is in the dictionary. No one is going to give you anything, you must work hard for it." Thank you to my 92-year-old mother, who will be watching this video with me next week. She instilled in me to be proud of who I am because I am God's creation and no excuses were allowed for not making self-improvements every single day. She would say, "Make an effort, not an excuse. Find a way, not an excuse." Thank you, Mom and Dad. To my colleagues and future trustees, continue the good work and commitment to follow the vision that several of us were able to actually create in that strategic plan. Focus on student achievement. Continue to be data-driven, gaining input from parents, community, staff, and our students, and remain as a cohesive team. Governing, continue to governing with the heart that you have for people. People from different socioeconomic backgrounds, different religions, different nationalities, different needs, whether it's physical or mental. These differences bring such uniqueness to the classroom every single day that provides an opportunity for this district to be a district of inclusion, to have deeper respect for our differences, and to broaden our perspectives, to create a better, broader viewpoints and foster feelings of belonging. What a beautiful opportunity in this district. Y'all have the ability to create policies that are relevant to all and everyone has an opportunity to be successful. Dr. Raj, Mr. David Willbanks, Sarah McMur, Justin Chapa, Melody Fowler, thank you for your willingness to serve and thank you for what you do for this district. As I move into a different phase of my life, I hope that I have made some impact on a student, staff member, colleague, and the community that is positive and authentic. I'm a better person today than I was nine years ago because of the opportunity to serve this amazing district with strong leaders, caring colleagues, past and present, and a supportive community who values a great education for all of our students. I plan to continue to serve the community and students in different capacities of advocacy. My prayer continues to be for this district for strength, wisdom, guidance, safety, and endurance for every person in this district as you continue to provide an excellent education for our future. May you be proud of the work that you do, the person that you are, and the difference that each of you are making. Now, I have to end with a quote because that's what I do. This quote is from Winnie the Pooh. How lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye hard. Thank you, thank you, AISD, thank community.
Before we recognize and present you with gifts, Ms. Mays, would it be all right if we each took an opportunity to speak some words to you?
Sure.
Dr. Raj?
Okay, thank you, President Fowler. Um, I've got, I've got some notes here because I don't know that I'd keep my composure all the way through. Um, first though, you have made an impact. You just gave such eloquent words and the trigger for you was what I sensed, the internal questioning, "Did I make an impact?" You made an impact. It's felt, it's felt by thousands in our community. Thank you for that. We've been through a lot together, been a long time. Um, it's been a very fruitful journey, my friend. You started as a PTA force. And when you ran and were elected, that was when we were also pushing our 2014 bond. And so, there was Ms. Mays out there with her, her aggie-colored maroon, of course. One, one honorary whoop, whoop! Out there, "Vote for me, but please vote for this bond too." All at the same time. Um, you, you have been, even before being elected, you were part of this group. Our board back then went through our very first strategic planning process. Keisha was literally the only member of our community that was there 100% of every meeting, every planning session that we had. She didn't have to be. It wasn't that, "Oh, I'm running and I need to do this," wasn't anything like that. She was vested then. Your level of investment is no different now. Thank you for always leaning in, being all-in for the betterment of children's lives for our community. Uh, I, I truly believe in, in those years, we had the honor and privilege of going through interview processes for Board of the Year. Uh, we were all in, we were all leaning in. And through that process, what I saw with you was the, the greatest level of grace and composure. And you just demonstrated that again here. Yeah, that's how you lead, that's how you serve. You, to me, are the epitome of, of grace and composure. And I do say that because you personally have had to work through uh, amazing challenges as a trustee while having the heart for all students. And you have, through all of that process, and some were very challenging, some were personal, towards Keisha. And it was very bothersome to watch, but her response, again, grace and composure. Uh, the ultimate do unto others as you want them to do unto you. Uh, the stones that were cast just bounced off of you and you kept going. Now, I'm sure your family might say, "Yeah, some of them got, got some bruises." And that's what the family's for. And thank you, uh, boys, all the boys. The younger ones literally have grown up with this process. And anybody that's in this position knows what a sacrifice that is. And, uh, I thank you for allowing us to share the, the wisdom and the brilliance and the care of your mom that she has for our community. Thank you for sharing her with us. The community is better for it. We, having gone through so many things, uh, together, uh, I believe I personally am a better person for it. You have, you have taught me and educated me in, in many ways. You have helped me mature and become a better leader, uh, just in the nature of who you are. Uh, in, in your composure, uh, also in your, uh, always seeking counsel and, and question, uh, questioning things. I, I guess as the saying goes, iron sharpens iron. And thank you very much for that. I really do appreciate that. So, I could go on. Uh, we've all given quotes from time to time. Keisha's definitely owned that one though, right? So, I'm going to end, in her honor, with a quote. And this quote, I shamelessly stole from her, uh, that she stole from William Shakespeare. And this was in June of 2014, a few days before she was going to be sworn in as a trustee for the first time. And this is really all I can say. I can no other answer make but thanks and thanks. Thank you, Keisha.
Mr. Willbanks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Dr. Raj, for those kind words. Um, I share a lot of his sentiment. It's been so grateful, when I came on the board, you've been the president for the majority of that time in my first term and went, as you said, through some very hard times together. And like Dr. Raj, because of those hard times and because you, as our president, I'm a better trustee because of it. And I would say even a better person because of it. And I would say even a better person because of it. But wow, it's been a long time. I think, I, maybe you can correct me, but we first met way back on 2010, on a committee together. And I watched you rise to committee chair of the Bond Oversight Committee. But where I was really blown away is in your very first campaign. I know you don't like to remember that one, but you were an amazing person. And when I would campaign for you, the knowledge of you and your reputation was spread wide and far across this district because of the great work you did on the PTA and as a servant for this community. And I would tell my friends, and they're like, oh, yeah, I'm absolutely voting for her. She's amazing. She's integrity above all. And more importantly, you give an important, strong voice to those that don't always have a strong voice. And that's what I've always, always amazed about, about you. You know, yeah, I said I'm a better trustee because of you. And, you know, for some reason you may know, sometimes I go a little rogue. And maybe go down a path that, you know, the president didn't really want me to go down, or maybe even Dr. C. or my colleagues. And, but she has this amazing superpower that I think Robbie and her sons really know about. She has this look. She, you know, she can give you these ojos. Dr. C., you know what I'm talking about. And, and no matter where I'm looking, I could feel these ojos on the back of my head. And I would just look over and I would see that look. And no, oh, no, I'm in trouble. And then just back up and, and realize, okay, maybe that's not a good path to get on. Am I right, boys? You know the look I'm talking about? Yeah, so, yeah. I don't know where she got those superpowers, but we all could feel them. So, no, thank you for being our leader on this board. Thank you for giving a voice to those that didn't always have a voice. Your dedication and focus on what matters most, and that's the kids, has been amazing. You have been a master class on how to avoid the drama and all the distractions that distract other trustees in this role, and always remain steadfast in your focus on the students and what's best for the district. And I really, really thank you for that. And it's been an honor, really, truly has been an honor, to serve with you. So, thank you for your service.
Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Fowler. We're on the same page. So much of, of what I really wanted to say has been said by Dr. Raish, Mr. Willbanks. And that's no surprise because that's, that's the effect that you have on us. That's the effect that you've had on our district. And Keisha, when I think of your service on the board, I have also thought of grace and composure. I think of grace, composure, unity, and a relentless commitment to all of our people, especially children. Every time, at all times, laser focus. You rose to the challenge of being our board president through the pandemic, as you mentioned. We all know that trustees, we aren't doing this as a paid position. But I know many people that you couldn't pay them any amount of money to have done what you did. And you, you chose to do it. You stepped up. And you navigated us through the choppiest waters. And you did so with grace, composure, unity, and a relentless commitment to our people. You really did. Whether it was intentional on your part or not, whether it happened on the spot or later on, as I reflected, I have learned something from you in every interaction we've had, every interaction we've had in my two years so far on the board. My admiration for you does not stop with being your colleague. I admire you as a mom, as a woman, and as a Christian. I hope we can stay connected. As I told you in the back, I really hope we can stay connected so I can continue to learn from you. And I was so happy to hear that you will continue to be involved in making our community better and better because that's what you've done for so long, and that's what I know fills your heart. So, thank you for the difference you've made in Arlington I S D and will continue to make in our community, Keisha Mays.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Keisha, I think you saw I made a post back in February when you said you weren't gonna, gonna run. And I, I can't really adequately express in words what I said there and just stand by that. My colleagues have said everything I would want to say. But I will, on a personal note, you know, we met over 10 years ago, same time as Mr. Willbanks. I think we all met about the same time. And I was back new to the district. I was in my twenties, and I was eager to get involved, and somehow landed on your committee. And you really demonstrated a type of leadership that has been very valuable for me to learn from in this time. And you were also one of the first people to encourage me to consider serving in this capacity and really look to you as a mentor, as somebody that I have a tremendous amount of respect for. I don't think that your role in the transformation of this district could be possibly overstated. As Dr. Raish mentioned, you were a key component of the original strategic plan, but you also were a key component of the second and the third. I mean, it's no exaggeration to say that the path that this district had set itself out on, with that first strategic plan continuing to now has your fingerprints all over it. And we're going to continue to execute that plan even when you're no longer on this board. You know, there's no more greater testament to serving others than doing work that is, that you're not going to be here to see the completion of, but you've been able to see a good bit of it. And I think you're gonna feel very good about the fruits of that labor as we move forward. I've also been in awe of you for your ability to transcend differences, to be in the difficult positions and maintain your composure. Even when I know, I, I would figure that you would probably want to not have the same composure. I've also learned, it's not so much what Dr., what Mr. Willbanks referred to as ojos, but I've also learned that, that there's a moment where, you know, you see, there's Keisha, there's, there's Ms. Mays, the trustee. And every now and then, that comes down a little bit, and you could see real Keisha. And I, I really like real Keisha. Sometimes I was a little scared of Ms. Mays. But, you know, as, as it's been said, you also had a good, a big part to play in the 19 bond. You were a big part of us getting the T R E passed so we have the finances to deliver on the promises that we've made. And during your time period, serving as president on COVID, I knew we were getting heat from all sides. And I know there were days where I got hundreds of email messages, and I could, there was a time I couldn't possibly respond to them, and I just sort of gave up at some point. And anybody who served as president, and learned from Dr. Raish and from you and from, from Ms. Fowler, the president gets many more emails than your average, you know, your regular board members get. And I can only imagine the number of emails that you got during that time. And I also have a real special appreciation for the fact that you have tried so hard to represent the entire community, while at the same time you represent parts of the community that, that frankly, we don't represent the way that you do. You represent a part of town that historically has been underrepresented on this board. And I know there were times that decisions that this board made put you between those communities and, and the district as a whole. And you stood your ground, and you, you did what you thought was best. You should be very proud of the service that you've rendered. You should be very proud of the fact that you were the, the first black woman to serve as president of this board. And I don't want that to go unsaid either. And I look forward to working with you in the future. And I know that you're going to stay busy in retirement. I know you're busy with the United Way Board now, and look forward to seeing what you're doing in the future.
So, you got me live yet? There you are. So, let me start out. Robbie, you're the man. The big Robbie. You always said he tries to take all the... Now, Robbie, thank you for allowing Keisha to serve as long as she has. And the dudes, I mean, all three of the dudes she's proud of. And your mom and I are really bad for each other because we sit next to each other, and we pass notes a lot, like school kids. And I, I put, I passed her a note tonight that says, have the boys ever sat through a board meeting before? And she says, no, they're barely doing this one very well. Keisha, I love her like my sister. She probably doesn't want to claim me as her brother. But, but, Keisha, I'm gonna try to be brief because you've heard a lot of great things about you, and I don't want you to forget them. But I will, I will share with you that, you know, I put on social media my thoughts about you earlier today. Hopefully, you'll go back and read it. It's like a chapter long, so it'll put you to sleep tonight. But let me describe you. If somebody said, wrap Keisha Mays up in a couple of sentences. And, and this just flew right out for me. But it's like this. You love God, you serve others. Red, yellow, black, and white, all of them are precious and worthy in your sight. Well done, Keisha. Well done.
Dr. Cabasos?
Thank you, President Fowler. Well, Ms. Mays, Keisha Mays, so this got too serious, so we're gonna have to liven it up a little bit here. But, you know, when Keisha became the board president, I thought, this is gonna be interesting because we have had a lot of conversation as a trustee, but as a board president, it's very different. And she became board president during COVID. And, oh my goodness, the time I consumed. And every time I called Keisha, it was quiet at the house. There was no noise. I don't know where you were, but it was, it was just calm. In the garage. It was like, wow, Keisha. I mean, there was noise in my house and dog barking and everything. And I'm like, Keisha, why is it so quiet? And then she's probably outside or somewhere. But she took every call, every call. And they were difficult calls because, as trustees have already said during that period of time, was very difficult. I get asked as a superintendent, what was the most difficult time in your tenure? And I say COVID, leading through COVID. As board president, the leadership through COVID just is tough, if not tougher. She represents the community. And we had many conversations during that time about the health, the safety, the welfare of our students and our staff and our community. And, you know, to know someone's heart and spirit and love is a blessing. And you made me stronger. Remember the first time I called her as board president? You know, everybody, you know, she's trained as an auditor. So, I thought, oh, boy. No, no, I said, this is gonna be fun. No, she, I, no offense, Tim over there. No, no, no. But, but, you know, so, the first time I called her, and I don't know what the issue was, but it was pretty intense. And I, I was, hey, Keisha, we've got this going on and this going on. And silence, like, nothing. And then the next thing I heard is, can you say that again? And I thought, oh, my gosh. The phone had broken up. There was no issue. I thought Keisha was like, oh, my gosh, Keisha got mad. But no, the phone just broke up. And so she just really didn't hear what I was saying. But, Keisha, the steadiness and the grace that you have is just amazing. And the love that you have for our community and our staff, everybody feels it everywhere you go. You're strong, you're humble, you're proud, and you make us proud. And so, as, as a superintendent, outgoing superintendent, we're going out same time, pretty much. You're going a little sooner. But as a superintendent, I couldn't ask for a more committed, during that challenging time, board president. And you will, you will never know the impact you've had on this district. Just won't know. But you've had a huge impact on my life. And I'm just, I just, I'm proud to know you, and I respect you so much, Keisha, that, that you, you've made this place a lot better than, than it was. And really, in, in our entire district, when, when I would visit with Keisha about issues, it was a very strong lens of equity and justice and love. And, and all those things translate ultimately through love. And, Keisha, you're, that's your foundation. And I just appreciate it, and I love you.
Keisha, I'm gonna try to get through this. You're my friend, you're my mentor, and you're my advisor. And I thank you for taking so many of my calls, asking you for, for advice as I was moving into the presidency. I thank you for always taking my call and taking the time. And you were always so wise, and you let me talk things through. And then you wouldn't give me any advice unless I asked for it. And when I asked for your advice, you would calmly talk to me and help me understand things. And I will always love you for that. You're always calm, you're always reassuring. And the thing that I will always think about is how much you love every single student. You love them all. And you, you love the staff, you love faculty. You just have a heart for education and a heart for people, and it just radiates from you. It is so evident, the love you have. And this district is so much better because of you and your insights. We appreciate you, and you have done so much for this district. So, please know that you have that lasting impact, that you will always be remembered and, and known for your love and your dedication to Arlington I S D and all the students in this district. I'm going to miss you, I love you, and I'm going to miss all of your fancy shoes. We love you, Keisha.
All right. I think it's time for some gifts, Keisha. Yes. Would you come down here, please, and join us? Dr. Cabasos?
Keisha, to start with, here is our traditional child-themed plaque or, or statue that we would like for you to accept. It says, "Thank you for your loyal service to the children of Arlington I S D. Keisha Mays, Arlington I S D Board of Trustees, 2014 through 2023." We love you.
So, Keisha, yeah, you, you get a bowl. It's very, it's a coveted bowl, by the way. This is a retirement bowl. And you can only get it if you retire. So, this is the coveted Retirement Bowl from Arlington I S D. It's beautiful, it's centered on love, and it's given to you because of your dedication to this school district. Congratulations, Keisha.
We have more. On behalf of State Representative Chris Turner, he has a resolution and a flag that was actually flown over the state Capitol to honor you. He wanted you to have that. He has sent that from Austin just for you. Isn't that beautiful?
That is.
Just for you. And now, Mr. Mays. If you will come forward. Yay, Robbie! We know you don't like the spotlight, but come on down. You have to do it for Keisha.
All right. So you hold this. Yes, Robbie, so in appreciation for your service, dedication, patience, support, what else, Keisha, what else? All the things that you have done to make sure that Ms. Mays has been a part of our lives and has blessed us tremendously. And we know that it's a team effort. It always is. And we love you, Robbie, for your service to us and your passion for school by, shown through this. So you get this special pin, which, by the way, everybody wants. They really do. So I'm going to let Ms. President Fowler present the pin. This certificate is for you. Ms. Fowler, you present the pin.
Mr. Mays, thank you for sharing Keisha with us for so many years. Thank you for understanding how important this district was to her. We love her and we love you for sharing her with us. We would like you to have our special pin. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Don't lose that pin. Don't lose that pin. Okay, we're going to take these two pictures. Just when you thought you were going to go slinking out the door, Mr. Hibbs, now we want to recognize you and thank you for being such an incredible person. We'll start with Dr. Reich.
There we go. Thank you, President Fowler. This is déjà vu. Hadn't we done this before? With that said, I will say this is going to be a lot shorter than what I had for Keisha because we've already done this. But I do say thank you very much for answering the call and the question when you were faced, that you were faced with to come back out of retirement from this board to serve again for this past year. For me personally, it's been a wonderful pleasure having you back. I've always appreciated you in a colleague status as leading on this board. And during this year, you have not disappointed. You have provided and shared wonderful perspective historically. Hey, we used to do this. What are we doing? This would be a good thing. Historical knowledge, your passion, what I think most, if you ask anybody in this community, me as well, you wear your faith on your sleeve. And you truly exemplify in your actions, in your words, constantly standing in that gap. And you are the consummate protector of this board, the consummate pulse of this is what the community is probably going to do or say as a result of this that we are considering. You, you have that ability, your, your business acumen and experience that you bring and that you have brought this past year. I'm, I'm going to miss that greatly. A career of life and, and everything else combined gives you unique perspectives and skill sets that we've all had the pleasure of having you share with us. I am definitely going to miss, miss you here, miss, miss the John-isms. When, when John gets on a roll talking about something, nobody can stop him. And it's always with the, the greatest heart. You have a heart of a lion. And thank you for that. And I'll say to Ms. Mary Hibbs out there, thank you for once again sharing him with us and that time and that sacrifice. You are an angel here on earth for doing that and having to put up with him all the time. Thank you so, so very much. I know that you, your love and care for this district and for this community is second to none. It will continue, our, our community will continue to be served by you. In many ways, I know this in the future because you just can't stop giving and loving and caring for our world here. And thank you so very much. You're going to be missed.
Wow, what a legend. You are the true definition of a servant leader, my friend. And you're a role model in how you live out your faith each and every day. I was, you know, I think at the top of the list of your services, the 12 years you spent on this board. And it was an honor to get the call to ask, to replace you on this board. I have very big shoes to fill. I've talked about how I've only, I think, been able to fill maybe a quarter of those shoes. But the thing I've always lamented is the fact that I wasn't able to serve with you on this board when I first came on because I do consider you an important mentor. And, but then lo and behold, our colleague Bowie Hogg decided to jump ship and go over to city council. And my wish came true. So your wisdom and your guidance and the knowledge that you've had of this district is so invaluable. And I was, you know, even though it's been a short time, it seemed like just yesterday when we pulled you back in, it's been a pleasure to have you on this board and to learn directly from you. You know, this district, you've left your mark. You have advocated for this district in so many countless ways. And for that, I'm in, very indebted to you and grateful. Thank you for your encore role. And thank you for your friendship. Appreciate it.
Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. First there was Hibbs, then there was Hibbs 2.0. And John, when we, when you said yes, when we asked you to come back, right? I had typed, when we roped you back in, but that doesn't sound right. You consented. But I was so elated. I was so elated that you agreed because for years I had admired you. And when I was a teacher in the district, I had watched you serve. And I, I was just so excited, the thought of you joining us as this board and being my colleague. And during your swearing in, you said you weren't just here to fill a vacancy. You were here to serve with the best of your ability. And John, you delivered. You delivered and you exceeded. We had no idea we were going to be looking at a superintendent search. It, I do not think the timing was a coincidence. And I just appreciate all that you've poured in. And that was a lot. That was a lot. I just wanted to tell a very quick story that kind of, to me, epitomizes your service and who you are as a person. Dr. Reich and Mr. Hibbs and I are the Community Engagement Committee. And one of our very first meetings, we actually joined the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to tour the Center for Visual and Performing Arts, which was very recently named after Dr. Cavassos. And due to COVID and all the things, this was actually your first time to see the inside of the facility. The facility that was part of the 2014 bond package that you worked so hard to pioneer and gain community support. And when we walked into the main auditorium, I got to witness you witnessing the fruits of your labor. You were just in awe. You had to sit down and I just really wondered what was going through your mind. It was such a joy to share that moment with you. I will never forget that. You lived out what every trustee should strive toward. Both you and Keisha's tenure on the board has made an impact, a lasting impact in the lives of our students and staff. And I just thought, I want to be like that. I want to be able to, when I leave my seat, I want to be able to say, I made this district better. And John, you've done that and you did it twice. You did it twice. I want to end with reading the verse to you that I've heard you share with another leader we both know and love. Well done, good and faithful servant.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. John, you got, you got my best speech when you left three years ago. No, it's been great. It's been good having you back and your level-headedness while you've been back with the board, helping us come out of some really difficult times. I don't know if this was part of your plan, but as a testament to just how coveted that glass bowl is, I mean, John's back. I don't know if he gets another one. Only one, the only one. Plans were foiled, Mr. Hibbs. But I've learned a lot. I've learned so much from you. I was thinking last night about, it's funny that Ms. McMorrow mentioned the 2014 bond, which you had such a, a role in. But I was, I had, I was cleaning out my closet not long ago. And you, I came across the Band of Brothers shirt that you had made for the 2014 bond that had all of the, the high school mascots on it. It reminded us of the time, our time campaigning for that. And, and one of my first times really getting out in the community and not just serving on FFC or CBOC was, was tagging along as your sidekick on the 2014 Bond Roadshow. And we went to go into people's homes and, and talked about the bond. I did presentations. And I remember particularly, we had an event at Tierra Verde. And you shared the mic with me and I just learned how passionate you were about equity for all kids in the district and really selling the things in the bond that were going to bridge the divide between different parts of the city. And so we have a tremendous amount of respect for the work that you did. It really has, along, just like I said for Ms. Mays, laid the foundation for so much of the work that we're doing now. Really appreciate it. And we're going to miss your, your institutional knowledge and your, your finger on the pulse of the community and, and the input that you give. But I know you're not going very far. We'll be talking soon.
John Hibbs, the legend, John Hibbs. Oh, John, hey, you know, this wasn't planned that you would come back when I was retiring, but I so appreciate it that we can move on from the district at the same time because you were there, when you named me interim, you and Dr. Reich, but you were there. And we had so much fun transforming, thinking, agreeing, disagreeing, all these things, John. And we still do. We still do. And Mr. Hibbs is a heart of gold. I mean, just a great, great person. And, you know, I, I find myself when I meet with John, listening a lot more than talking because I learn so much. And I learn so much about his heart and just a mentor to me, John. And if John wants to get something done, there is no stopping him. And I remember we had an event where we were hosting dinner as a board and superintendent. And it was a long story, but we were in charge of the dishes, washing the dishes. And me and another trustee that we won't name were washing the dishes very slowly because this is, we were just trying to do a good job. And John Hibbs came, just, and this is a testament to how he works. And he said, get out of the way. Let me show you how you wash dishes in an assembly line because he's done it so many times for all kinds of stuff. And, and we're to a Mary, okay, you've done it for Mary. And, and it was like, before we knew it, we were done. And I was like, wow. But, but he's, he's, he, you're, you're so respected, John. And, and you, when John says, look, I'm hearing that. Listen, because if John's hearing it, that means it's something that he has taken to heart that he needs to share. And you help the finances, you help our bond, you help our buildings, our facilities. But most importantly, John, you help our students, all students. Doesn't matter. You help them all. And so I consider you my friend. You're like a brother. I know we've said that a lot tonight, but you are. And, and I'm, I'm glad we're going to kind of go at the same time. But, but we will continue to stay in touch, John. You're, you're a wonderful man. I love you so much.
Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. John, I was so happy when you said, yes, you would come back. And when, when you were approached to come back, we approached you. And your initial answer was, if it's the will of the board. You never tried to put yourself first. It was the will of the board that you would come back and you would do anything that you could to help continue to move in the time that you were coming in to serve. And not only that, but you came in and you did serve. You didn't just come in and say, I'll be here as a placeholder. You came in with, with ideas, thoughts, disagreements, agreements. I mean, you came back full force, which is what exactly we needed. We didn't need another chair filled. We needed someone that was going to participate. And you did that. And we really, really appreciate it. And, you know, I don't want to tell everybody, but it sounds like maybe one Thursday evening, you, me, Dr. Cavassos, Mary, my husband are all going to go out and we're going to have some dinner. And we're going to... some dinner, and we're going to just talk. But the last thing I want to say is, you always say, my friend, and you don't just throw that word out there. You really mean it. You really mean it. And I appreciate you. I appreciate your heart. I appreciate the way that you treat your wife because that says a lot about a man. And I appreciate it, and we've seen it for years and years, and it's been consistent. So thank you, thank you, John, very much for serving on this board, and thank you for being my friend.
John, my friend, my advisor, I'm going to miss you. You have been a force on this board your original term, and then coming back and agreeing to serve again when we needed you. Thank you so, so much for that. You served a lot of years, but yet when you, when we reached out to you and needed you, you agreed to step back. And that says a lot about you as a person, and that says a lot about your love for this district and the students that we serve. I will miss your wise words. When we talk, I know that you believe in what you're saying. You're speaking the truth. It's coming from your heart, and that is something that I will always admire and love about you, that everything comes from your heart. You're one of the most unselfish men I have ever known. You have a true heart for people, and I love that about you. You've helped us through a lot of situations, and we've listened to you, and we've been better for it. So thank you. Thank you for being my friend, and I love you. It's all yours.
Okay, I want to keep, I know it's getting late, so I want to make sure I make this brief. A universal thank you to our district, every teacher, every staff member, every employee everywhere, the administrative staff, all of you, I mean, have truly, are the people that revolutionized our district. We can sit here, we can, we can throw out great ideas and shifts and thoughts, but it's the people that, that are actually implementing it, and each one of you are the heroes of this district. We've had, I look out through here, I see champions who's volunteered for years, that, that has served on all the committees, and you see what you can be. When you grow up, you can be a board member. So I want to challenge you to do that. Maybe, think about that. Maybe we can have another Mays come back. I mean, so that would, that would be awesome for this district. Really quickly, for the executive staff, you've got a brand new superintendent coming in. I think this is one of the best staffs anywhere in the state of Texas, maybe even in the country. I would put you up against anybody and say, there is no finer servants. And when I, when I say this, this is not just a job for you. This is a, something you're passionate, that you're, that you want to see our children succeed. You want our teachers to be able to be successful. Right now, with this new superintendent come in, show her grace, show her the unity of this team, each one of you individually. You will be able to give great insight. The individual that we're bringing in is not necessarily one that somebody would say is a change agent. Because this district, whereas it can always be improved, this district is not one of those districts that needs wholesale change. And the reason it doesn't is because of each one of you. You have dedicated yourself. I listened to Stephen go through 40 slides tonight, and he did it flawlessly. I wish I could get an employee to be able to go through. I, sometimes I, I give them five slides and it takes them an hour. You went through 40, and you did it flaw, flawlessly. So that's where I'm saying is that you're, you're champions, each one of you in your departments. You are the admirals of your ships, just like the principals are the captains of their campuses. Empower yourselves to be able to pour into this new superintendent your knowledge, you know, and where you really see that there can be opportunities for growth, let her see that. Let her know that. I can't challenge you enough there because I, I want to see her successful because it's each one of you being successful. Turn my eyes over to the superintendent. I appreciate your words. I appreciate everything that you had said. Marcela, we are friends. And really, most of our breakfasts were more about what's happening in the world than it really with the district because I always knew. Yeah. I always knew where, yeah, that's right. They always told me, you actually talk business? Now, Marcela, though, is, I, I knew that, I could always stress you. I, I would, I would, you never missed a beat. When there was something that was of importance, something that we needed to talk about, something that we needed to walk through, you were there. You knew what it was. You were on top of it. You are irreplaceable. And even though the, the new superintendent will come in with the la, same last name, maybe even the first initial, Marcela, your impact on this district is phenomenal. You, you had 800 people the other night that said so many quality words about you, so I'm not going to repeat it, but you, you and I know where we are, and I appreciate you. For this board, I want to share something with you. You guys did the impossible. You navigated through COVID at a time that all other districts struggled. I mean, they, they struggled and some almost sank. Obviously, you had the greatness of Ms. Keisha being the president at the time. She did the most awesome of jobs. You guys have navigated a lot of things this year. Came in and we had some hard discussions in the back room. We talked through a lot of things, a lot of policies, a lot of changes, a lot of things as it relates to taking the hard news that we're losing a superintendent and having to find a new one. We didn't always agree, but boy, I'll tell you what, there was one thing, it was just like I do with my wife, is we never go home mad, and we always come to a resolution. And we go out united. You guys are awesome at that. You were right, you were right board two years ago during COVID, and you're the right board now to move this district forward, each and every one of you. I see knowledge, I see wisdom, I see passion, I see, you know, a level head that looks, you know, okay, let's think about this. I see a, a person that has great leadership. I see those leadership qualities in each one of you. You're, you're going to miss greatness right here. When you bring in new board members, my challenge for you right now, just like I was challenging the senior staff, you've got two roads, two paths that you need to make sure that you solidify in these next three or four months. One, you're going to onboard two brand new board members. Board members that will come in, and some have served potentially on committee, some are going to just come in not really knowing. We just don't know how these elections turn out sometimes. When you bring them in, onboard them with the sense that I know each one of you have, don't try to bring them and say, I want you on my team, but I want you on our team. Bring them on as vessels of consensus or wanting to reach a consensus, right? The second thing, you're going to be as instrumental as making the new Dr. Kavassos successful in this district because you know this district as well as anybody. Build her up, encourage her, give her the confidence that, you know, we've all struggled. With that, you know, I will share with you, as I walk out here in a few minutes, I must leave it at this, I look at two, five, and I'm confident that two more are going to come in, and this board is going to be greater than the boards before. I respect you. I appreciate you, and know that you are the right people at the right time. Thank you.
Yep. So, Mr. Hibbs, we start with a recognition of your return to service, and this is for you. You've, you've gotten the other gifts, so this is the new one. But John, congratulations on your service, and thank you for being a great servant for our school district. Appreciate you.
If we could ask Mary Hibbs to join us?
Isn't she pretty?
She is. How'd you ever get her, John? How'd that happen? Mary, we want to thank you for loaning us your husband for many, many years and all the time that he was away from the family. Thank you for loaning him to us. This reads, "In appreciation for year of service to the Arlington ISD students, staff, and community, to Mary Hibbs in appreciation. We love you." Do we have any items to consider?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. It is now 9:27, and we are adjourned.